The call is ready to be made by Grand Forks City Council to order. And the first item in business is the introduction of our new capital works manager.
Thank you.
Justin.
Yes, sir.
You're on. Tell us who you are. I think there's some interest in knowing more about you.
Sure. My name's Justin Lindstall. I have a Bachelor of Arts degree in Western Architecture and a diploma in Architectural and Building Engineering Technology with a major in Construction Economics and Construction Operations. I've held senior level positions in a lot of complex organizations, most of which has been federal or provincial governments. So, General Manager of B.C. Housing for their Capital Improvement Division, Director of Facilities for Finnland Canada, Senior Operations Manager for Defense Destruction Canada, Project Director for Sturals. I'm here today because thankfully the city of Grand Forks allowed me to come work here. I'm usually. I'm from Vancouver Island and right now located in Edmonton, but very thankful to be moving me and my family back to B.C. because I'm a B.C. person. Looking forward to getting back into the mountains and the streams from that perspective. I'm very excited to come to Grand Forks. Most of my experience has been running large-scale capital programs, using the range of anywhere from $500 million to $1 billion for those organizations, but also looked after facilities, maintenance, operations, and real property as well.
Justin, we were happy to have you here. We had a taste of your work today with Graham. That was a great presentation, and welcome to our meeting.
Well, thank you very much for having me. I look forward to helping everybody in the meeting.
Excellent. Okay, we have some corrections to the agenda?
additions.
No, we also have some corrections.
To the minutes. When we get to the minutes, we have a small cut.
Oh, in the minutes?
Yeah, in the minutes.
All right. So, on the agenda, we have late items. The discussions that we had today on the four-way stop is the major item on the late items.
So, that's 12A? 12A is the four-way stop?
12A late items would be the discussion we had on the DVA and the four-way stop. Councilor Thompson, you were wrapping up your discussion of the letter, or did you want that as a late item?
No, I think because...
You can put it in your report.
...it's part of my report.
Okay.
As part of my report.
All right. So, a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Councilor Korlick, Councilor Crog, all those in favor? And we have minutes from October the 12th, the special going camera minutes. That's the... We do those. A motion to adopt the special going camera minutes. I'd like to do away with that process altogether. Councilor Zalinski, seconded by Councilor Korlick, all those in favor? And the regular minutes of October the 21st, which is the one that Daniel has some corrections on?
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, I just got it up on the screen. So, Resolution 3R 351, we noticed after the agenda was printed that there was opposed votes listed on that resolution. However, it didn't print, so we corrected it in the final copy. That's for signature, and basically ultimately it has an extra small section here for an opposed vote that was on there.
Do you need any help spelling the name at all?
No. It's all good. So, I'm just bringing it forward because there was a little checkbox missing.
So, I have Councilor Zalinski's vote?
Yes.
Okay. So, with those corrections, and can I have a motion to adopt the regular meetings with those corrections? Councilor Zalinski, seconded by Councilor Thompson. Any further on that? All those in favor? Carry. Okay. Sharon, you've been patiently wasting... Waiting there for at least an hour.
Wasting away, waiting.
Welcome, Sharon. The Pearly Elementary School request for a waiver on water charges. That's the topic on the ticket.
So, on May 21st, I was here last, and there was a huge crowd that day. And I requested three things: a connection to the water main, a frost-free hydrant, and water service. And when I left, I thought I got all three of those things. So, we've progressed, and the water hydrant was in on July 16th, which was really exciting. And then, August 16th, we had a big quarry day, and we built an incredible dry creek and pond system and a quarry area, which is awesome if any of you have gone by and seen it. There's the hydrant. It's lovely, lovely. Thank you very much. And then, on September 18th, we had over 300 plants arrive, and September 19th was planting day. There's my children watering the plants. So, the water goes from the hydrant into a flower pot that they can scoop out of, and then they can fill water hydrants there, water cans at the hydrant. Of course, not right now, but normally I have a hose system that comes off. And when the trees were first planted, we settled them in with watering. There hasn't been any watering since then, of course. Planting day, like I said, was September 19th. And just after that, I received a call from the school board that I've been... Rewilding has been built for the water usage, and I was pretty shocked because I was under the impression that I got my requests, all three of my requests. And then, when I contacted the city, they said, "Well, look in the minutes." And you're right, the minutes. Didn't say much of anything. And then, I looked in Les Johnson's video clipping, and yes, my three requests were there. And I was still under the impression, after listening to the video clip, that they got what I had requested, but that was not to be. So, I've got a water bill. So, I'm asking that... Like, I would never have progressed with my planting if I hadn't had my water. I would have made sure I had my water. So, I'm asking Mayor and Council to remove this charge and to waive the water usage. That's what I'm requesting.
And I recall, and I do believe, that there was not a decision on waiving the water. It was discussed.
Actually, it was... I was speaking against the waiving the water during that meeting, but at the end, I too was convinced that that's what we were doing.
So, you believe we approved the water?
Yeah, I thought so, because I was the one arguing against it.
Interesting.
I mean, I've watched the video clip, thanks to Les, multiple, multiple, multiple times with several of my teachers, my colleagues, and others that are in the rewilding council with me. And we all kept... Everyone's just shaking their head. So, that's beside the point. At first, I thought it was just one arm didn't know what the other arm had said. It was just a hiccup. And so, I had, you know, phoned and talked to several people, and they eventually were as mystified as me and said, "Just come back to council and just get confirmation from council that, yes, I do have that part." I'm requesting that.
All right. So, could we get this on the table? Would that be appropriate at this point?
Sure.
And this is to waive the water fees?
Sure. Let's put that... Let's start there.
And the seconder for that would be Councilor Korlick, and I'll open it up for discussion. Councilor Thompson?
Excuse... Can I ask you what the amount we're dealing with?
Yeah. $45.42. This is not... So, it was $44.52 for water commercial fixed three-quarter inch service. So, that's sort of a blanket cost. And then, 90 cubic meters water being...
And a consumption charge?
Consumption, one unit, 90 cents. No, 9 cents. 90 cents. I don't know what that says, what that means, but not very much. But I didn't use water very much. It was negligible because I turned... I got the hydrant. I played with it a bit, you know, to make sure it was all established. And then, we had our planting day, and if you remember, it was like a week later, we had that frost. So, I just locked everything up and took the hoses out because I didn't want children leaving the hydrant on or anything else. So, we didn't want much, and luckily, we had rain, and that established the plants. And I've done a little bit of just hand watering to make sure the plants are okay. But my panic, of course, is when I have to start watering.
Councilor Zalinski?
I guess my first reaction was, what a teachable moment.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you've got young kids there that have new plantings, and the idea that nothing's for free out there. It either takes time or money, and you realize if you want this type thing, it's not zero-scape, zero-scape, that things cost. So, that was my first...
So, this would teach them what?
That you better know what direction you're going on. If you can't pay the bills, you know, maybe you want to do something different.
Actually, there was...
Councilor Crog, you're next.
But there's a whole bunch of teachable moments there, like which I'm sure that they used a lot of, as long as it wasn't like anti-city picket.
Were your discussion on the table?
Anyways, I thought that that's where we end all...
I did.
We installed the thing and the water. And then afterwards, because I argued against, I thought to myself, "Yeah, it's... That's the way it should be." Like, if you look at the cost, minimum cost, I guess, is $40 a month.
Yeah. So, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, quickly, looking at the resolution, it was basically that council direct staff to proceed with the installation of the water service to the Pearly rewilding project to be funded from the Public Works operating budget. So, given that, that installs the service, so that's why the bill went out. Ultimately, the bill was $45.42. We're from $44.50 is the basic fixed charge, and only 90 cents was the 1.63 cubic meter charge that was used on the property. So, ultimately, that's the average that would be used at the facility.
I can't say it would be. I think it'd be...
Well, sometimes it may be a little more, but even if we say it's $50 every two months, so that's about $300 a year that we would be charging the rewilding project, or if council chooses so, to donate that.
Sharon, could you explain again your relationship to the school board on this project and the volunteer involvement that you have?
So, it's basically my project. I came up with it. There's a little group of people, mainly teachers, who are sort of on a committee now to look after things. The school board donated some things to our project. The PAC did. Pearly School did. Many, many community people did, as did the city. It's all volunteers or grants. I've applied for various grants, like the plants all came from the Tree Canada grant. And, yeah, and then otherwise, it's just helping all sorts of people and getting them to volunteer their services or products.
Right.
So, there's no additional budget. That's why, of course, I panicked.
Any new speakers before we go to the two already spoken? Councilor Zalinski, then Councilor Crog?
So, what I would like to suggest is that the city soak up the service charges, the $45, but again, speaking about that teachable moment with kids on how we can't consume everything, that the school board still be responsible for the consumption part of it, and they understand where their money's going as they want. This is the question.
So, we could modify the motion. You made the motion. You're asking for a change of that motion?
No, I'm just throwing it out there for discussion. I don't even know if that's viable or not, but I'm just wondering. I guess my... And one of the concerns is if the school board is not attached to that account, then there's a very real possibility, as things go on, that someone out of his office might turn that water off in a moment's notice without knowing with customers.
Yeah, that's my worry. Like, if this council has approved me, what happens if there's a future council? So, I don't know if there's any way to write it in stone a little bit.
Well, this would stonize it a bit. Councilor Crog?
Yeah, speaking in support of the motion.
Okay. Further comments on this before we vote? This is to provide that service as part of the package that we may or may not have agreed to before. Councilor Thompson?
So, the bill goes to school district, school work?
This one did. And then, I got a phone call that says, "You've been charged." What, you know, which budget is it coming out of? And I went, "There's no budget for that." I had my plant budget, and we're building this outdoor learning center. The credit union gave us a grant for that. That's that budget, and I'm, you know, trying to keep it organized and be fiscally responsible for the various pockets of money, and there was no pocket for water usage because I thought I had that pocket dealt with, but...
And the deal was that you would do it on your own. They were not involved, even other than some of the donations they...
Yeah.
Right. Councilor Crog?
And just to be totally inclusive, because I was talking about it this morning, involving the regional district. More into all of our projects.
$5,000 they gave.
Did, perfect.
And that was one of the comments, is that I went to them before I came to you.
Yes.
And people were pleased about that.
Yes.
Councilor, you ready for the question?
Well, I just...
Councilor Thompson?
A 90-cent bill that you're asking the school board to pay is going to cost them a lot of money to prepare that check.
Not just them, but also our staff time, like plus the stamp and all of those things.
Exactly.
It's more than the 90 cents at that point.
So, from what I hear, the suggestion is either we stuck it all up or none of it?
Yes.
Either.
At least for now.
Closing it off, Councilor Crog?
Dead August, and you've gone on vacation, and while gone, the kids decide they need a live creek.
So, it's locked. There's a combo.
Okay.
And the hydrant is locked.
Yeah.
And there's a timer on the hydrant supplying morning and late evening sprinkling as...
And plus, that's all beyond feasible that they can take home on it. So...
Okay. Ready for the question?
What is the motion?
The motion is that we cover that comment.
Confirm that, yeah.
The amount, the volume used, and the standing charge.
Can we have Kevin read it out just so we're all agreed on the same motion?
So, the resolution, as I have it written, and please correct me if you don't like it, that council direct staff to waive the water fees for the Pearly rewilding projects.
That's what I was going to say. All right. Ready for the question? All those in favor and opposed? We have one opposed. Motion passes. All right.
Thank you.
So, you didn't ask for retroactivity on that?
So, you're into it. All paid in pennies, the kids can collect.
Yeah.
It'll be a teachable moment.
So, they'll pay this?
No, no.
We won't pay this one. You'll change. You'll take this one away?
Yeah, that's the plan.
Okay. As well as... Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, we're down to council reports, and I can start here with...
Councilor Korlick.
Councilor Korlick.
Hey, I know it's pretty odd that we don't have a report these days. So, it was an interesting time. I... We had a meeting here with Community Futures and a lot of regional district and others as well about the community hall and where we're progressing in the future of it. It was really interesting, and a lot of hard work has gone into it. So, I wish everybody luck in moving on to the future. I did attend the West Kootenay Boundary Regional Hospital Regular Board Meeting. The participants came from all of the Kootenays and boundary areas. To me, one of the most important messages is that of the urgent primary care units. Six locations have been identified in the area, just not announced. There's funding available for primary care units as well as the urgent primary care. Implementation of primary care planning is well underway. Some discussions surrounded digital health, and how can we strengthen the process and the service availability. Cultural safety, that was played a really... Quite a bit of a conversation was around that. And that's basically the connection of physicians and programs to patients and trying to keep same doctor with the patient for a long time rather than being all over the place. And we're pretty lucky here in Grand Forks, just we have fairly stable physicians and doctor program. And just to find the right fit for the physicians and the patients, that again is something they're working on and trying to work out and figure out just exactly how it will... How it'll come to pass, because there's always a question of, well, you have to wait six weeks to see the doctor, otherwise you have to go to somebody else type thing. So, but we do have good doctors in here. And there's lots of things that are in play. Some of the most challenging aspects are finding contractors for construction projects. RFPs have been posted with no response, therefore delays about any construction or building of medical facilities anywhere. You know, there's just no response to any of the RFPs put out there. And good news about our hospital, even though it's not brand-new by any means, it's in pretty good shape, and I think we're very fortunate to have that. There's some that are newer and not as in good condition, and some of the hospitals are very old in our area. And during that week, there's a few of us that went on a field trip to Orton Creek Watershed, learned about the land conservancy area, visited Lost Lake, and I had never been up there, so I didn't know there was even a lake in existence, but apparently there wasn't for a while, and it's come back, so that's good. So, it's marshland, and I think that says a lot for our, I guess, our watershed in general. I did go down to the Monster Bash on Halloween around there. There were only a few little monsters. There weren't very many. And, but good on Aaron for pulling that off. I just want to thank the staff for all the planning and organizing for council. I know it's always a challenge to, you know, get everybody organized, and I think we have another... It's just busy all the time. That's really... And I also went to regional district. I guess, what's it, economic?
Economic Development.
Yes, that was interesting. I'm just getting my foot in on that one, and just listening to all the challenges our boundary area faces. Well, there's a lot, and I think one of the most positive aspects that came out of that was the feeling that, and the knowledge, that we don't stand alone, that in some of our questions, the other towns, the other city councils, Greenwood and Midway, as well as the regional directors, feel that they all... They do have a stake in a lot going on, and they want to take a more active part in some of our issues that face Grand Forks. We feel like we're alone on some of it, like our homeless situation and transitional housing and things like that. And they feel that it's just not Grand Forks' issue. It is the boundary. So, I was happy to hear that they are interested in taking... Well, they have an interest in it as well, so I think that was good. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilor Thompson, and addendum?
Okay. My report is going to be very lengthy. As one of the councilors sitting at the table for the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group, I have attended two meetings. Currently, the focus is on finding a suitable location for a temporary shelter to house homeless individuals until the end of March. Members of the group have taken on specific tasks in this regard and will be reporting back at the next meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 7th. At the last regular meeting of council, the resolution was passed that the city of Grand Forks believes it is a shared responsibility with other levels of government and service providers to have a shelter within the city. Mayor Taylor, to facilitate this, arranged a meeting on November 1st with Karen Harrett, RN, at Boundary Hospital. Councilor Mauslin and I also attended this meeting as the city's representatives to the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group. The discussion included using the old nurses residence or the vacant mental health building temporarily. We were advised that the nurses residence has issues with asbestos and mold. The vacant building does not have showers or laundry facilities. Further, there is only one bathroom there. There have been arrangements to review these facilities on Thursday, November 6th. The building inspector and the fire chief have been asked to accompany us to provide And as an addendum to my report, particularly in this regard, Mayor Taylor, councilors Korlick, Mauslin, and I, along with the interim CAO, the acting fire chief, and the building inspector, were given a tour of the former nurses residence and women's transition house by IHA staff. The building needs roof repair and a thorough cleaning, but in many ways was usable. If the floor tiling that likely contains asbestos is not compromised, there should not be an air quality issue. IHA has contracted to have the air quality in the facility checked. In fact, that morning, they had a contractor come in and collect samples. This building has 10 bedrooms, each with a sink, two full bathrooms, laundry facilities, kitchen facilities, and a common area. Successful negotiations of a lease of the building would take some time, and with the repairs required, would not solve this year's extreme weather shelter problems. It was pointed out that this could evolve in making the building a permanent facility with a proven operator and strict rules and regulations. B.C. Housing would have to be consulted as to whether they would agree before any approach to IHA would be made by the advisory group. I have requested that the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group send a letter to council requesting our support for this initiative. It must be noted that staff at the hospital are not in favor of the suggested use of the building. And in this regard, council received a letter today from the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group that raises follows. Dear Mayor Taylor and city councilors, the Grand Forks Social Services Group met yesterday. We were pleased to learn from Councilor Christine Thompson of the possibility that the Interior Health Authority-owned building formerly used as a transition house by Boundary Women's Coalition and informally referred to as the old nurses residence may be available for community use as an emergency cold weather shelter. The building itself and its location have many positive attributes regarding this proposed use. We would like to request of the city that further communications occur between the city and Interior Health to explore this possibility. Because this is a pressing matter, we hope that action can be taken without delay. Thank you for considering this request. And in that regard, I would like to propose a resolution that the city approach Interior Health Authority with a copy to the B.C. Housing Authority, whether or not this building is available for lease to be used as an extreme weather, cold weather shelter.
Seconder for that motion? Councilor Korlick, second for motion? Opening discussion, Councilor Crog?
I will speak to the motion in the history preceding the actual motion to start with. This is way out of... This is way out of whack backwards. There's a committee that's working. They're talking about different locations, they're looking at stuff. We have members sitting at the table, but it's, when you look back, I don't know how you got the jump or how we got the jump from shared responsibility to, oh, by the way, we're negotiating with IHA about a building. No, no, we have a shared responsibility. Where's the shared? The shared is sitting at that table. And then it's like, oh, thanks counselor for bringing this to us and saying that it'll be that. This table didn't authorize anybody to go talk to IHA about anything. These guys, they'll put together their recommendation. They could come to us and say, hey, why don't you go talk to IHA? And then, as a council, we decide whether that's going to happen or not. Right? Not other people. And still the stretch from, from that, that, I didn't like the motion, I missed the meeting, my apologies. But I was okay with it. But this is like, not even close to what that motion said. And we should not be talking to IHA. We are part of a community group. Right?
Thank you. And Counselor Thompson, and then Counselor Zalinski.
I hear what you're saying, Counselor. The mayor was trying to facilitate a recommended solution. Time is of the essence because the advisory group was having a meeting the following date.
Date, yeah.
And I wanted to report to them on, on that particular issue. The city, I'm not recommending that the city is going to be operating or purchasing or leasing or doing anything, but only to facilitate discussion between Interior Health, BC Housing, and the advisory group. But it has to start, as I understand it, it has to start with the city making the approach from government to government. And that is why I have put forward the motion that I did. It may go nowhere. I mean, IHA may come back and say, forget it. BC Housing may come back and say, forget it. But we need a starting point. And this, I mean, it's getting cold now. And these people that are, are in the elements need a place to go. It would have to be operated with a proven provider with very strict rules, not the way the shelter was run.
Counselor Zalinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm on the same line as Neil. I don't know how we got from shared responsibility to actively looking for sites. We have not had that discussion at this table. And I'm very disappointed that there's a feeling that we, any individual of us, can go out and do something without this table saying, yeah, that's the direction we're going. It's caused two problems for me. The first problem is, just told us that the social service committee has no standing. Like, you guys heck with what you want, council's going to go and start looking for a site. You know, so their credibility to me is gone. The second thing is the precedent, as far as, here we have a group wanting a site to run their services. And council took it upon them to, council took it upon them, not staff, it took it upon themselves to go out and start searching and talking to other agencies. We haven't done that with the gymnastics people. We definitely didn't do that with the seniors. So...
Didn't do that with the first shelter?
Yeah. So, I, yeah, this sort of blew me out of the water that this was happening. So, and then to have it come in the back door with this letter here now, yeah, I don't think it's the way that you...
Clarify a couple things that are on the table then. This is not a new item on the table for the Social Services Advisory Group. It was brought to the table and discussed and not followed up on. And so, I did take the role of following up on something that had been brought to the table and I didn't feel I'd been followed up properly. As a facilitation, what we're looking at here is basically solving a question of, is this building even available? Which then would go back to the Social Service Advisory Committee. We have accepted the terms of reference of that committee. This is Darren who chairs that committee with a full recommendation of a voted motion. So this was voted on around the table by the participants of that group.
Yeah. So first of all, it was only voted on after you guys did the tour. Second of all, it wasn't anybody from the Social Services Group. Because we just heard that you, Mr. Mayor, did the contact. And from what I understand, you stepped away from that group. So, you know, those rationales don't necessarily fit with me.
And why, sorry, couple of, and that's completely backwards. Usually what people do is, we need X, so we get a provider. And then we get a location. Right? So now you're, we're running around with a location that appears to be sanctioned by the city or soon too. And that's like, completely backwards. He's writing a letter, oh, thanks for bringing it to our attention that this is available. Right? It's, like it has nothing to do with the way that, that it's supposed to happen. Like this, how we operate as a council and having members do stuff when it's not authorized by the, not even asked at the table.
So, BC Housing has come forward to us and said that there are three things that we require.
Said to us, who was us?
They did not say it to us. They said it to, to the advisory group on what their requirements are.
I was on the table when it came forward, so I'm sorry I didn't say that. But Counselor Mawson would be clarified.
And I, and I, I apologize to counselors that are offended by this, that it didn't come to council prior to doing the review and the research, looking at it. But time is of the essence. And so, I was, I was the one that was pushing it. And the River Valley Community Church has, was at the last meeting and they are looking at perhaps stepping up to the table on a temporary basis. But Pastor Warner has to go back to his members and his committee to get their, their okay on it. I just felt that this was an opportunity to, you know, kickstart things. And there was no time to bring this back to council. So unfortunately, and I will take responsibility for that, then I went ahead and did advise, along with Counselor Mawson, of the tour and of the, of the proposal to perhaps being able to use that.
And I'm feeling kind of repetitive by these two counselors at this point and ask if the other counselors have anything to say. Counselor Studley, would you like to speak on this matter?
I, too, I think it's sort of a backwards process. That being said, we've seen what the other way, how that results in. So we've seen it just, okay, let's just let some other group do their own thing. We've seen it turn into the bus depot thing. And the results of that were the citizens saying, hey, why doesn't council have more meat on it? Right? Because we weren't able to really do much with that bus depot situation. So I think it's kind of interesting that we're sort of reversing it. But like I say, it would be nice to have, you get communications with a provider first, find buildings later, because we could give, we could have keys to all the buildings that the city owns in hand, ready to go. But if we don't have a provider, that's useless, right?
So you realize at this point, we do not have a provider.
Exactly.
And it is snowing last night and that there is an urgency to this matter. I'm sorry, gentlemen, please, Counselor, Counselor Korlak.
Well, I was, I didn't have my hand up.
No, but we did decide to get a chance before we hear the argument you've already made.
So I went on the tour of the building, mostly because I wanted to know what it was like. I've never, I didn't even know it existed until a couple weeks ago, quite frankly. And I wanted to see where it's located, the possibilities compared to the old IHA downtown. And to me, that was a, that was a non-starter right off the top. And so, I wanted to see. And who knows where it's going to go? It might be just all a loose point because we don't have a provider. We don't have, there's nothing. And what we signed on for, I think, in my thoughts, we're not the decision makers. The Social Services Group, my expectations were that they would be coming to council with some sort of presentation and saying something. And all of a sudden, it's, it's not our decision. It shouldn't be our decision to make, to make. We are, we don't own the property, it's not ours. I know there's people that are living rough. And it's not, it's unsettling. It's not going to happen this year, no matter what. And I, you know, I, I don't know. I just, I just don't feel that's our role in this, to make decisions about other people's lives. We're not the social services. We're supposed to be here, supporting and honoring the job people gave us to do and respecting, at least to listen to requests or whatever it is. You know, I just don't think it's in our hands to make a decision on that. It really is not.
May I respond to that?
To that specific, and then these gentlemen are getting frustrated with me.
I know, I know. I'm not asking council to make a decision on anything. I've been down approaching Interior Health to say, is this a possibility? Would you be interested here? We don't even have to carbon copy BC Housing, that was just a thought that I had. And then we can tweak it back to the group, to the advisory group and say, yea or nay. All I, all I want to do is get the ball rolling. I don't want the city to have any responsibility for the building or its operations or its repairs. All I'm asking council to do, because we represent this council at that table, is to, is to, to write a letter on behalf of.
Okay.
I think too.
Okay, I respond, and then Counselor Krog.
Okay, I think the ball is rolled. The ball is rolled back to that social services and it's the job of, there's a huge variety of people there that represent all sorts of different bodies and agencies in our community. So we did, the ball rolled where it should go, into their laps for them to do something. And I think that's now for them to get, making progress, I guess, on whatever it is. If someplace has been lovely, that is, it's in their hands now, as far as I'm concerned. It's, we did take the building inspector there, he did go, he gave his thoughts. The building is being tested for air quality and whatever else. And that is started. Now it's, will be between IHA and the group involved.
Counselor Krog.
I would first of all like to thank you for the insending dismissive comments that you've made up to this point. I'm sure they're highly amusing. But saying that you already know what we're going to say, I'm pretty sure both of us were responding to Counselors Thompson's time issue, which had not been discussed at all. So, time is of the essence, it's snowing. This is next year. It's been said it's next year. So, how are you doing that?
Counselor Thompson said it's next year. I think that we would have that answer if we asked our staff to talk to Interior Health. I don't believe it's next year. I think at this point, it's the only thing on the table at this point for the whole community. It's the only, only spot.
The only spot.
Counselor Krog, interlocuting your presentation.
Yeah. Okay. So, you've got them sitting at that table.
Who?
Health.
No.
The other teams.
Interior Health.
They're sitting at that table, they're supposed to be sitting at that table. So you're going to go negotiate over, why are we negotiating? If I want to introduce you to somebody, it's like, hey, here's Brian, see, Rob, this is Rob, go at her. You figure out what the lease is. Has nothing to do with that, does the weight of the city, it, does that carry more weight than a community organization made up of every stakeholder?
Okay, can I...
It's all about the process.
There is nobody at the table that has any ability to do anything as a committee. So they send things back. When they have letters written, they have the women's center do it. When they have certain things to be done, they ask different...
They ask. We weren't asked.
Excuse me, Counselor.
No.
Counselor Zalinski.
First of all, again, the letter to IHA, we are undermining that group big time. Because my understanding is they sent that letter weeks ago. So, that's disappointing.
Who sent the letter to you?
There was a letter written and hand-delivered that they received the day before our visit to the site.
So, after that, time is of the essence. Time was of the essence back in January when we passed the motion to say, we need definitions to get this discussion on the table. I tried pushing that, obviously. We had a planning seminar that we agreed that we are not going to talk about social services issues until we know what we're talking about, which included the definitions of what we're talking about. We had a process underway. We had a survey from our CAO saying, where do you guys want to go with this? You guys all saw on my email, it says, great survey, but I thought we were going to sit around the table and discuss it. And then the next thing I know, oh, the city is finding a spot for a shelter. Yeah, it confused me.
And further comments on this? Is there anything from staff that would, would be worth saying at this point?
They're not going to get involved in it.
At this point, it's looking tenuous for your motion?
That is what democracy is.
Right. You know, I, the chairman's actions in this, in this matter is simply following the directions of a vote that was taken at the table. And so I welcome his request of us, not necessarily to write a letter. I would think a phone call in some discussion would be far more appropriate than a letter. But this does not commit us to anything. This simply says whether or not that is worth the committee taking a closer look at. Counselor Thompson.
But with respect to your worship, I think council wants us to back off and I want to respect that. And I would like to call for the motion and then continue with the rest of my report.
And can we clarify the motion? Is that on the...
I have it on the screen at least. I replaced the building as actually outlining it to be the old nurses residence. So it's not just any building out there, potentially.
So, speaking to the motion. I don't want, I don't want to stall this thing. And that's why I'm saying is, we identified it a year ago that we had to deal with it. My fear is, we pass this motion and we're stuck in the, can't bring it back for six months. So, well, I'm just saying, are we sure, are we sure we know which way we're going with this?
If you turn down this motion, you're going to lock it in unless I bring it back.
Well, yeah, and then it's a unanimous type vote, I mean.
Not if I bring it back within the timeframes of a secondary consideration.
Yeah, and again, it has to be voted on at the table, I guess. But, so that's my concern, is if a great thing comes up for that residence, I don't want to get necessarily stuck in it. So as long as we know what direction we're getting going. So as long as we know what direction we're getting going, I guess it's.
Well, okay, maybe, hopefully.
What Counselor Crowe wanted, if you can.
They, they sit at the table, even if they don't show up, somebody's name is there.
I hear you.
Like, we don't have to, why is our staff?
You're repeating yourself at this point, you made that point earlier.
I did.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, and I'm repeating it, so what's the problem?
Okay.
Obviously, and, and I do appreciate, um, your apology and the direction for this. I just think, like, it just goes back to the committee. The committee just says to, or says to their member, well, give us the phone number of whoever.
Um, if, if I can just.
Counselor Thompson.
Just a couple of things, um. If, if, okay, first of all, there was a, an I H A rep from Camona that was on the tour. Trevor, who's his name, I can't think of his last name. Um, and the, the other question I have is, what status does that group have? They are a standing committee.
What, what?
Are they not a sta, an ad hoc or a standing committee that the mayor?
No, this, this committee. We are struck by, uh, boundary services, uh, by.
It's a community to the extent.
Their organization in terms of their service, in terms of social programs.
So, so I'm clear on that, I'm just standing. Uh, I wasn't before, I thought it was a committee that you had, um, um, stuff.
No.
Okay, um. If we change the word approach, that the city inquire, make an inquiry, that could be a phone call, and leave B C Housing out of it, um, if, if they would be interested.
Would that soothe any concerns, Counselor Crowe?
Oh, I'm just, uh.
An inquiry, what was the term?
But I, I, there is, there is a way to fix it and.
Please, take a shot at it.
Okay. Delete, highlight and delete it. This is a committee, they're adults. They can go to I H A, they, they've got, like.
Who was the statue?
Why are we even asking I H A? Does the city, you keep saying, we're not, we're not responsible for this, blah, blah, blah. But it's, it's, yeah.
Counselor Thompson.
I'm not, I won't, I, I will withdraw the resolution. Then another member of council needs to, uh, move that this be received for information and that the, um, advisory group be advised that it is their responsibility to make those inquiries.
Is that your desire, Counselor?
Uh, regardless of whether it's my desire, I'm going to withdraw the motion because I know it's not going to have the support that it needs. And I would, uh, be much more comfortable going to a meeting on Thursday and invite unique group that this was brought forward, that council does not believe that it is within their mandate to initiate or facilitate, um, uh, this, this request.
Okay, the motion is taken off the table, it doesn't need the approval of your secondor.
Oh, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
You will make a motion to?
Yeah, so basically that, um, we sent a recommendation that it was received for information, thank you letter for, for their letter, and the city of Grand Forks fully supports that community talking to I H A, right? Not supporting the location, none of that stuff, is just, they're doing the job they're supposed to do, so just let them do the job. And if they need a letter of support that they can take, I H A, there's your letters. That's how it normally works, just that.
Further comment to the motion? Um, and we have a secondor for that, do we? Counselor Studley, seconded motion.
Okay, so we're down to that, that a recommendation you sent, is that the new?
Yeah, ignore the top one, oops.
Oh, it's the end of work.
Okay.
Like, there can be other stuff in there.
I would like to say that this is a new low point for the city, and I'm really embarrassed at the decision coming out of this group. I think that it clearly should have respected this group that has been set up and that we agreed to listen to, and that once again, we're obstructing movement forward at a very critical time for our community. So I am not softening my comments here, and I will vote against the motion. Other comments?
I will vote against the motion as well.
Other comments? Ready for the question? All those in favor of the motion? All those against the motion? Motion is defeated.
Now what?
Well, tell me, I mean, I'm, I'm doing my best to tell you that at this point, I think facilitation was to use our building inspector, our fire inspector, to clear this issue of whether this was even an available space, um, so that we can facilitate moving things forward. We have major hurdles here, and the three things that we're supposed to supply that would provide us with funding for a shelter would be having a location, having a provider, and having support from the city. We don't have any of those things, so it looks like that's the roadblock to this group moving forward as the social services advisory group.
I guess, I guess my comment is, is that this nurses residence, or whatever you wanna call it, um, it's great that the fire inspector and building inspector went, went there, but you would think that the service provider would be the one saying, yes, this structure would work for me.
Okay, but do you understand there's no service provider?
That's the problem, that's what I mentioned two weeks ago. Like, we could, like, Counselor Studley saying, we could have all the keys for every building in here, but without a service provider, we're still spinning our wheels.
And are we not putting, by getting a service provider, the cart before the horse? I mean, don't we need?
Somewhere to do it.
No, not we, who is we?
Well, okay.
Don't interrupt him, please, Counselor.
That's all right.
It's not all right.
That, that there is a facility available. Um, I was asking, uh, my suggestion was that it would be the city that would, would do the outreach initially, to see if there would be the interest in by I H of allowing that facility be used for that purpose.
But I didn't see that.
Counselor, please, sorry.
And, and, uh, if, if that's not clear, if I, if I've bundled up the presentation, um, then I've done that. Uh, but there has to be a starting point, and it would be the advisory group that would take the, if, if I H, if I H is even interested, to take the reins and move it forward.
Thank you. Counselor Crowe. Okay, and if there are no other motions on the table, I'm gonna have to move on with the agenda on this matter. Counselor Zalinski.
I'd like to make a motion to receive the letter from Darren Pratt of November eight as information.
A secondor for that motion. Counselor Crowe, this is to receive it for information?
Well, to have it.
How is it in the record?
Yeah, because basically, it's not even here yet, so that's, uh, I think we owe it to Darren at least to get it in the records.
Okay, placing it in the record, this is the motion, all those in favor? Carry on, further motions on this matter? Counselor Thompson's report is ongoing, you're on.
Thank you. Okay. October thirty first, I attended a harm reduction color reunion sponsored by anchors. Topics discussed included addressing stigma as this can be, and, and can be enabling. Stop the negativity that can lead to building, stop the negativity that can lead to building trust. Updating the map showing where the sharp containers are and placing one in City Hall. Rural empowered drug users network redone, meet every two weeks. They provide peer group support and advocacy and build capacity to have a voice. Members of this group go to hotspots in the city and collect discarded and used needles. I asked how many they collect, and it was advised that there could be anywhere from a couple to as many as thirty-five. I was also asked if other members of council would be interested in receiving meloxone treatment. I said, I was interested but could not speak for other counselors. Needs at the boat camp were brought forward and included water, porta-potties, garbage collection, and sewage company. In addition, council is going to be charged or challenged to quit doing something addictive, such as coffee, tea, or cellphone use, to name a few. Redone will be issuing the challenge when they have more details. I received a telephone call on November the fourth from the owner of Sunshine Valley Appliance. She asked if B C Housing is still intending to build a facility on the Second Street property. I advised her that at this time, council has not heard anything in this regard. She would prefer not to sell and wants to protect it and the downtown core for future development. She went on to advise it in a green area between her building and the pawn shop. Her son had observed several used and discarded needles while he was on the roof of her building reattaching and awning. This also caused her concern as she maintains that area herself. Uh, along with, uh, counselors Moslin, Corlock, and Zalinski, I went on a field trip led by Barry Brando Senior to the Overton Creek area and what I call Lost Lake. Since the last time I went on a field trip, I was disturbed by the amount of water that now encompasses a substantial area outside the fenced-off area. I was not able to access either of the information kiosks nor the seating area. I did observe a water trough with a tap on it. I know that the city has the water rates on this creek, but my question is, has permission been granted for any rancher to use this resource? Respectfully.
Thank you, Counselor. And I would like to appreciate the fact that you go to these meetings for the educational content that you're getting from, um, the C A T and anchors, and that Counselor Corlick is also attending with Counselor Moslin. I think those are really valuable in understanding the broad picture of what we're facing with drugs and homelessness, and, and I commend you for making that effort, thank you. Um, Counselor Moslin's report. I'm aware that you've had an opportunity to read it, and so I'm not gonna read his report for him. I would like to reiterate just the one comment that he made very clear that our position right now in moving forward with anything to bring people out of the cold would be to comply with the three requests that we have in front of us from B C Housing before they can really, uh, respond to our community needs. Understanding that they do want to do something here in Grand Forks. They are not the ones that are holding the, the process back.
And we are, is that the message I'm taking?
That is, Counselor.
Okay.
Um, and can I have a motion to accept council reports?
Can I do a report?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, I usually go, I don't, I'm sorry, council reports verbally, so Counselor Zalinski.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I, I wanna say thank you notably to, uh, the counselors and Daniel that represented us in the Remembrance Day Parade festivities, but all our military members, ladies and men out there that, that serve us every day, so I wanna, um, definitely thank you for, for doing it, and, and the great crowds that we had out here on Sunday.
Good response.
Just awesome. The, the only other issue is, uh, I was chatting a bit about our cannabis violence, um, and I'm struggling a bit and hoping that we can have a conversation about, uh, the term youth-centered facility and the setbacks from that. Uh, right now, the way I read youth-centered facility, if we had a daycare within that hundred-meter distance, yet it, it was an empty building and has been empty for five years, it's still a daycare facility and we'd be disallowing the, um, developments if we, uh, you know, take it word by word. So I'm struggling with that, and I would hope that council would have a discussion whether or not that fits the, the needs of that, that zone or that use, and, uh, hopefully we can get it on the agenda for discussion at some point in time. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. And, Ron, did you wanna speak at this point, or you wanna hear from Counselor Studley?
After, after council items.
Okay, Counselor Studley has a report.
Yeah, I'll try to keep it short, just because we've spent a lot of time on council reports, lots of good stuff came out of it though. Um, yes, so I've been part of young professionals group here, and, uh, pretty much we're like a subcommittee of Destination G F, so we decided we're gonna have a rotating liaison to Destination G F. Come up with some great ideas, we're just gonna sort of, um, start to work on, um. One of them being, we're gonna try and figure out some sort of way for, uh, first and second-year, um, leadership credits to be able to be accomplished here in Grand Forks, opposed to most people are traveling out of town to accomplish that peak. And that takes a lot of time and resources to, to do that, right? I also attended the leadership, um, workshop that Community Futures had, and that was great. And that's, that's about it.
Thank you. Counselor Crowe, did you have any report at this time? No. Uh, Mr. Matusy.
Well, no, just a motion to accept reports.
Well, um, was this on a different subject than the reports?
Information that came out of the reports.
Um, okay, we get motion to accept the reports first, you're saying, Counselor?
I'll make that.
Motion seconded by Counselor Thompson, all those in favor? And Mr. Matusy?
Thank you, version. Um, on the item of the cannabis, I think, uh, the best solution is to really have that workshop where we go through, look at those, uh, definition rules criteria. On, on the second one, which is actually the larger issue surrounding the previous discussion, although wading into the previous discussion, um, you know, one of the things that, uh, you know, I was just speaking to, um, sheets about the, the definitions, and so certainly, Counselor, you've been calling for that. Uh, we're gonna try to have a report back to council. If we can't do it because of the timeline would be, we'd have to have the report in, like, tomorrow again. We're in one of those situations, and so, uh, if we can get it as a later item for the next meeting, we'll do that, if we can't, then it'll be for the December sixteen, so you have the appropriate time. But really bringing forth, uh, uh, a look at definitions that we could put in the zoning ballot to clarify the types of uses, and then get the basis right off the top of my head. We'd use those uses that are found in the legislation and those. Uh, we'd look at appropriate areas, uh, from a planning perspective, and I think I'm pretty clear that there's certainly a difference from, to a planning perspective and those that you may have to put your hand up and agree to as an elected person representing the community, but we could put that information forward, uh, and those amendments. One of the things that I asked Doris, and, uh, you know, what, within your official community plan, because as I suggested, we should bring these definitions, I was concerned about the O C P. And, and, you know, your official community plan in twelve-point-three-seven says, um, that in fact, you will work cooperatively with publicly funded agencies, other levels of government, not-for-profit corporations, and offerings court services in improving housing for the poor, disadvantaged, and low-income. So, I think we have a policy basis to now take that and say, okay, what would that look like if you put it into zoning? So, I know there's been a stumbling block for council in some of these decisions by not having definitions that you at least voted on, even if you agree or disagree with them, uh, or location, potential locations. So we'll bring forward a report, and then we council can have that debate, uh, and it won't solve this problem for people out on the street tonight, um, but it'll certainly be a building block to get in some of those things discussed in the future, and, and hopefully that will help. I think we do have to start somewhere, and, and maybe by having that discussion, council can start to enhance those.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Comment?
Yeah, quick comment, um, this, to, to me personally, it's an important issue. If we wanted to have a special meeting to talk about that, I have no problem, I'll, I'll book time. So, um, yeah, I think we'd have that discussion sooner than later.
And again, the sooner and later you think might address some immediate response to our current crisis with winter shelter?
Well, and, and until we have that discussion, like, even if we had a couple hours tomorrow, I have no problem.
You know, there is no zoning issue with the property by the hospital.
Well, whatever the case, we need the discussion, I, you know, we can talk about it, all that stuff as we sit around here, but again, um, sooner the better in my books.
Okay, thank you. All right. Where are we at?
Regional district. Your report.
Yes, well, mine and Counselor Corlick this time, because she was. Yes, well, mine and councillor Korlick this time, because she was good enough to attend the B C D C meeting, and there were a number of issues that came out. Councillor Korlick, would you like to lead off on that?
Transit was one of the ones that was a major concern in the whole boundary area. And the fact that I H A is funding it right at the moment, and would like to...
Funding it, they're running it.
Running it, excuse me, running it, and where they would rather not, I think.
Even asking out for two years now.
So Grand Forks has transit, and you just can phone them and they'll come and get you or whatever it is, by Greenwood and, I think it's just Greenwood, isn't it, that just has a scheduled service once a week? And so there's... And rural Grand Forks, so North Fork and everything, they have no service. So there's a great question about durability of retaining and running the bus service. I, you know, I'm new to the conversation, so I'm sure Mr. Mayor will be able to pick up on that.
Well, and I think where they left it with us at the regional table, you know they've been complaining that Grand Forks gets the benefit and they're all paying more than we pay for the service we get. So what they're suggesting at this point is that there be a service review, and that they put out an R F P to try and find a provider who would run the service other than interior house. The difficulty there, the argument was, we need public input on this, and so they were suggesting that there be public forums in our communities that would try and shape what service people wanted. We pay a sixty-forty, I think we pay the forty and they pay sixty?
I think that's what it is.
There is a split there, and I think it's sixty-forty, but it does mean that we want better service, that we're going to have to pay for it in taxation. If we want to reduce service, we should warn people now that at this point in time, we ran last year with a ten-thousand-dollar overage. This year, we came in, I think, and broke even, if you remember the financial pictures on it. But it's not sustainable at the level that it's at, partly because the regional people are feeling that they want out of some of the cost and they'd like to modify their service, but meaning for us, we could risk losing our customized service, so the phone-call response service.
Yes.
So, you know, they're suggesting we move forward with a public forum on this matter before we go to R F P. Councillor Thompson?
Just a question, do they have stats on the ownership? And is it mostly the city?
Yeah.
Residents?
All the stats support what they're saying at this point. Okay, so we'll be bringing this up in the next little while because we are under an expectation that we meet with our community in some kind of a public forum to discuss the future of transit before they craft the R F P request. I think that's quite reasonable.
And I think that was the most...
Couple of other things that came up out of that. We had a concern that we didn't have the regional district at the table on the issue of homeless in particular, and Kathy Hutton will be representing the regional district on the table. She is a past councillor and is back in town and a very competent lady to sit on that table, so she's been accepted by the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Committee. What are we missing here? There was some discussion on forestry. The Trails Master Plan is going ahead. I guess that's about all to sort of hitting the high points on it at this point. And further questions on the regional district? I open it to questions. Hearing none. A motion to accept a regional district report. Councillor Crogg, seconded by councillor Studley. All those in favor? Okay, the next item of business is the development variance permit. We did have a public input meeting this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to accuse myself from this discussion for conflict of interest.
Can you explain, in general terms?
I have a professional relationship with the owner of the building, and thus, a decision could be...
And the resolution that we're looking for is that council...
Do we approve it or we deny it?
I'm not... I'm wondering what this selects, one of the proposed resolution options here.
We issued the development variance permit.
Yeah.
To reduce the setback. Do you want the whole thing read or not?
No, I just, it's, I wish I could see it. Okay, so option one or two?
Yeah, option one.
Or two?
Or there's a third one.
The third.
Oh.
Referring back to staff. So do we have a motion to accept option one?
I'll make that motion.
Councillor Crogg, and seconded by councillor Korlick. Further discussion on this matter? And you heard that councillor Zalinski had discussed changing that to be more reasonable in terms of that being one of the things we've had to deal with, so we are supporting with option one that we give the variance at this point to the three-point-five meters. Do you understand? Ready for the motion? All those in favor? Proposed? Carry. The strategic plan is the next item of business. So you have in front of you the document that we all worked on over a period of time. It's been summarized and shortened into a poster, and you've got a picture of what it looks like in short form. We've got more documentation on some of it, but our presentation of this to the community is in the form of a very summarized approach. You've all seen the document. We actually have copies of it, I think, that are kicking around today. There was some on the table, I thought.
Well, what we'll be doing is, we'll get them out tomorrow onto everybody's desk here on council's side. Plus, it's an easy format, so we can laminate it and hang it on walls here, plus get it out to the public through some sort of media press release and on Facebook. I think this is a better format to communicate what council's strategic vision is for the community for the next couple of years than what we had in the past.
Thank you. And so the motion is to adopt the strategic plan. Such a motion. Councillor Korlick, councillor Thompson. Any discussion on this matter? Councillor Zalinski?
So even though we've got a whole bunch of things to do there, if I read correctly, come budget time, we'll actually be costing some of those services or some of those wishlists out.
Specifically, yeah.
And then we may be amended in the future. Okay.
Motion. All those in favor? Congratulations, you have a strategic plan. And the appointment of acting mayor, this is a rollover from last year, but we're on a four-year term, so I think it changes a little bit, but as we discussed previously, in my absence from the twenty-seventh to the twelfth of December, councillor Studley will be the acting mayor in my absence. Councillor Zalinski?
I'll move the motion.
Move the motion to accept this...
Schedule, or...
Schedule. Councillor Korlick? All those in favor? I want to remind people that if this rolls around and you're the acting mayor and something comes up, this is not written in stone. You can negotiate with someone else to cover for you if you're away on vacation or there's something happens that you're not able to do it. So this is something that can be modified with reasonable cause. Councillor Crogg?
Oh, no, I just passed it to the accident. Evan, something really bad.
I don't want to chair that meeting.
That's not an excuse. Okay. And the next item is another scheduling issue of the committee of the whole meeting. It's for twenty-twenty.
So we both voted on that?
No, this is the committee of the whole meeting.
No, but did we vote on the deputy mayor?
And regular. It's both in one.
Okay.
Regular and committee of the whole.
Oh, it's all in one?
Yeah.
Oh, no, the acting mayor, we voted on?
Yes.
I thought we didn't.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Okay. Committee of the whole. This is the schedule, motion to adopt the schedule for twenty-twenty. Councillor Zalinski, councillor Thompson, all those in favor? Carry. All right, and now to the last and most exciting thing, before we stop at Market and Second Downtown. We had quite a session on this today, and I guess what I'm going to suggest here is that we send this back for further discussion between city staff and ourselves in terms of where we're going with this. So there is no shaped motion on this, councillor Crogg?
The manager of operations was going to look into further information of whether the other intersections...
Yeah, there's work to be done on this.
Same time, so we don't have the whole piece of information right now. Basically, what we've been looking at is a recommendation of basically status quo and lowering the speed limit, bringing up sight lines, and to go from Level A, which is Second, and Level B, which is Market, and yet if you do four ways, you get a Level A and a Level A.
Okay, I'm a little vague on what we did recommend from this morning. Did we recommend that we approved those items, or did we say we needed to work on it? There was discussion...
We were moving it to tonight.
Okay, so I'm suggesting here that we not belabor it this evening with detail, that we send it back for further work between ourselves and staff before we bring it forward again, and we could look at some of the things that came up in general discussion this morning.
What things are we looking at?
Well, there was suggestions from councillor Crogg that we're on the wrong corner.
Okay.
No, that's the correct corner, but there's a huge problem.
Well, and you're still hoping for four-way stops on both?
Yeah, two.
Okay, and that's not what was recommended in this, but...
By somebody I don't really know.
Daniel helps.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So this morning, Mr. Reed brought forward the recommendations from the engineer, but it was just for council discussion, because obviously it's committee of the whole and council really doesn't make decisions there. Council more or less sent the report to tonight for discussing this further to see if we wanted to proceed with those recommendations or go back to the ideas from the marketing strategy, where we had some of the, that four-way stop was supposed to happen there as part of it. It would slow traffic down. Some of the other ideas would include some sort of raised sidewalks or crosswalks potentially that Mr. James brought up. But ultimately, I know the D V A has been hoping to get that four-way stop there for about five years. The traffic engineer is now saying, "Yeah, it's really a safe corner. You don't really have to change much." On the other hand, there's also the marketing piece and the marketing strategy that wouldn't be conducive with leaving it this way. So it's a council decision on where to go with that one location. The other locations could easily be brought back at a later time, but I think it would be a good sign to show some support towards that location.
So you're suggesting that we move with those three recommendations that we have on the table at this point, and that we have further discussions on more detail of the plan?
Yeah, so the discussions that were brought forward, or the recommendations that were brought forward, I put them on the screen right now from this morning's agenda, were to install post-reflectors on existing stop signs. That's not going to create a four-way stop. So convert existing crosswalks to parallel lines, that's not going to create a four-way stop, right? So the decision would be more in between, does council want to follow the engineering report on the traffic study, or does council want to create their own resolution and create a four-way stop?
Okay, I'll open it for discussion. Councillor Thompson?
The engineering report is fine on reported accidents, but I am aware and have been advised there's been a whole raft of near misses, and those aren't taken into consideration in the report. So personally, I would like to see the four-way stop.
Me too. And I, I'm wondering at this point, are we debating these four recommendations which we could go forward with as an attempt to do something about the situation or not? Are we opening up the full discussion of this, or are we looking at these four motions here?
There are no recommendations on it.
Could we go ahead with these, though, and at least be improving the traffic visibility, changing the crosswalks, all the things that are up there?
Well, I think that if you're going to go with all this, you might as well just go and do the four-way stop.
So you feel it's not an advantage to approve these?
And it talks about four-way plates.
Okay, councillor Zalinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing as this is a D V A issue, and we did not have the opportunity this morning at committee of the whole, committee of the whole, to listen to the D V A, because they did have jobs, I do see them in the audience, is it appropriate for them to comment on this at this time?
Only if you vote on it entirely.
I was with the motion board.
I second the motion to allow...
And all those in favor? All right, so we can hear you. I would like to comment on this issue.
Come on up.
It will often be special.
Thank you.
Well, just because the recommendations aren't what they ask for.
Yeah, I wasn't aware it was going to cancel this morning. I already had previous engagements, so sorry. Thank you for listening to what the D V A is asking for. So the recommendation was made by Roger Brooks when he came and did the marketing plan for downtown. A four-way stop at that intersection would do more than just traffic calming. It would allow people to stop at that intersection and pause and consider coming downtown rather than just burning on through to the Second Street Bridge. So there is that benefit, and as well as councillor Thompson pointed out, there may only be four accidents on record with I C B C, but there are many, many, many near misses or unreported accidents, obviously, to I C B C, because we keep a diary of it in our incident reports at work, and there are definitely more than four that has happened in the last few years. So there's a couple benefits to us. You put the four-way stop there, it'll improve safety and pedestrian safety for the downtown, and it will help slow traffic down so they can consider coming to our downtown core, to our beautiful Market District. Yeah, so we would really like for council to consider moving forward with the four-way stop, please.
Thank you, Amber. Councillor Crogg?
One of the issues from way back was the amount of speed people pick up coming off the bridge, and before we hit the four-way stop. That's why I've always been in favor of it. But you've still got a huge stretch and one of the most inane intersections. Like I say, the other day, I saw somebody turn and laugh, somebody going straight, and somebody turning right all in the same lane at the same time, side by side.
It's Grand Forks, D.C.
And yes, I definitely support a four-way stop, but you need...
More.
Another one. So that'll slow them off the bridge, nobody will be able to pick up speed. If you want them, do forty is a weird number, right?
So what I hear is that there's no appetite to approve these four things at this point, that we need to go back to the drawing board with our staff and the D V A and put something else out in front that council will approve.
Oh, I'll put something out, two four-way stops.
Councillor Crogg, would you like to make the motion that we move it back to staff in terms of further work with us as a group?
No.
And what are you proposing?
Four-way stops.
On a motion right now in front of council, I don't think that's a responsible move.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you could do it. You've never listened to me before.
There's a reason for it.
With respect, I would support that, because we've had many discussions about four-way stops, and, you know, we can talk it to death. Let's get some action going here.
There would... Sorry. When they changed it from a four-way stop, this is going to sound weird, but the industrial coming off the bridge used to be four-way, and because the big trucks had to stop, it tore up the road. And by switching it to a two-way, we saved money, it was easier for everybody, but the whole point of the story is this time, it's reversed, and a four-way will actually be the improvement. And the argument over there was people are going to get mowed down by logging trucks because nobody's going to stop, because it was... to stop because it was a four-way for so many years. Well, this is now opposite. It used to be a two-way, get used to it, people, it'll be a four-way.
So I'm, I'm not in favor of that, but I can't stop you from making that motion, but I do recall that we asked how much is things going to cost? We don't know any idea what a four-way stop would cost, and what are the other implications of that? I think we really owe it to our, uh, planning department and staff to send this back for further work rather than to make a quick motion now to make four-way stops there. That's my opinion, and Counselor Zelinski?
Yeah, I'm going to support the four-way stop idea. I do would like to hear the cost. I thought either five grand or twenty grand is, uh...
Let's make something.
Well, well, no, we, we had a price at one time.
Yeah.
That was thrown out there.
Five to ten thousand was kind of the max, um, that I was thinking.
Yeah.
But Mr. Reed is in the back here, he can probably help out.
Yeah.
Just one comment.
Both report.
And they appreciate the report and the details in it, um, but again, I don't know if we asked the right question. Like, from a traffic safety issue, this is what the intersection looks like. It's more than just a traffic safety issue, it's, it's more of a marketing and whatnot issue, so, um, as long as we realize that.
Can I ask for a comment from staff in terms of this motion that is proposed? We don't have one on the floor, do we?
Yes, we do.
Do for a four-way stop?
Yeah, you made it, I seconded it.
Oh, I said two four-way stops.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't know I had a secondary. That's awesome.
Is that for two or for one?
Two.
Two.
Okay, you guys are doubling down.
Two by fours.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor for two four-way stops on Second Street. Can I hear from staff?
Well, I'll start off, Your Worship, and certainly we have a technical expert. I, I wasn't concerned at the beginning of the discussion until I re-read, you know, because, you know, council should always watch when an engineer says, "Don't do something," and then you do it because of, because of the liability issue, so I was, but, but really in this case, going to Counselor Zelinski's point, the, the engineer in this case was looking at whether it was warranted for safety reasons, didn't really consider anything else, and so he said, "You don't have to do it." Well, that's not the point, the point is you want to do it, it's not about a have-to. So I think that may be fine. So certainly, uh, I would recommend referring back, not to delay it, but only so you had all the costs and, and, and timing of installation and those types of things, and, and to bring that kind of back. For the second part of the motion, for the second four-way stop, I don't know if that was considered. I heard this morning that it may not have been, that Mr. Reed has to go and actually see if it was done. If it wasn't done, then I wouldn't, I would suggest that that part of the motion be that we investigate a four-way stop at that location because we should have a report on whether or not it could be possible or we have the information. So, uh, Your Worship, I would recommend breaking it into two motions. The first motion is to determine the cost and timing and implementation of a four-way stop on Market Street, and secondly, to, if there is no study, to actually do, do some work on whether or not a four-way stop can work or the implication of a four-way stop that's put that way on the other street.
Counselor Crog, you have a motion on the floor. Would you like to modify that to take into consideration what our CAO is suggesting?
I would love to.
Sure.
But I'm not going to. That's not rocket science. It's a worse intersection.
Um, the, the one at, at Seventy Second and, and, um, Second Street, I hate that, me too. I just hate that stop because you gotta inch your way out to see who the hell's coming like a bat-eyed direction, and, um, I, I know that when I was, uh, the first time I was on council, the very first time, I had a phone call from a gentleman who wanted a four-way stop sign there. So, um, I, I'm not out to spend money just to spend money, but I think that's safety. And, you know, there's a lot of people that use those crosswalks and, and cross there, and I, you know, just...
Counselor Crog's not making a motion, but your motion stays on the floor?
Yes, uh, motion stays on the floor, um, to send it, or, or no, sorry, mine was to do it.
Two stop signs in, two, two...
Yeah, to just do it. I see that I could amend it to closer to what the, um, acting CAO?
Has suggested.
Has suggested, but his suggestion was to do the one and then later look at doing the, but I'm just saying, let's look at doing them both, and then if it comes back that it's negative or cost prohibitive, but rather than do one and then maybe someday you will look at the other one.
So you, you do want to report back before you make a final decision?
Yeah, yeah, I will amend it, that it goes back to staff, but not the way it was laid out where one is, is costing and the other one isn't. One has looked at a bit more information than the other, maybe there might be information. I, I just want them both tossed in.
Counselor.
Both looked at at the same time.
Mr. Reed, too.
Yeah, just to clarify, Your Worship, I wasn't really, obviously, understood that it's not what puts you know into the future. The only unknown for me was whether or not as part of the previous study, this intersection was included, and Mr. Reed didn't know if it was or not. So, I, you know, I would suggest that the, the motion suggests that we, we find the implications of putting in a four-way stop, and, and not because it may be a great idea, but there may be implications sometimes you might not be considering until, uh, immediately. Just go and find out what are the implications of putting in a four-way stop if we don't have the information already. If they have the information already, then we'll bring it forward and council can bail it over.
See Mr. Reed?
Hey, Mr. Reed's been the best. He's here to bail me out.
Just here for clarification. So I, I guess what I tried to make clear this morning is, um, what Mr. Gates heard was that it was a safety concern at Second and Market. So we had a traffic engineer do a special audit for that intersection. It was deemed not to be a safety, uh, concern for the traffic engineer. So if it's a marketing or an economic driver that, that you want, um, is four-way stop the best option for you? Maybe there's other opportunities, um, and I'm not sure off the top of my head, but I, I was looking at, um, some other options, and they have T intersections, and they, they have many ways to kind of shape traffic the way you want, so am I clear that on Seventy Second and Second that it's a safety concern? It's not a economic driver or trying to get people to stop to pull a right or a left or?
It's, it...
Go ahead, Counselor Crog.
It's economic driver, but it's, um, the movement of people, right? And the efficiency of movement of people in and out of the downtown. Um, I don't know how long people have sat there, um, trying to either cross or make a left, especially to downtown, to, you know, so it is, it does, it covers both safety and marketing.
Okay, so your motion remains on the table, that we put in both, one at, uh, Market and Second and Market in, or, uh, Second and Seventy Third?
Seventy Second.
Second.
We're sending it back to staff and...
We are now?
To, to confirm costs, to confirm, uh, whether or not a actual safety study's been done on the second intersection and how they...
Information about the second one, and then by all means, if the, um, manager of operations has other information on different setups that can be more effective and stuff. I, I don't think anybody, or maybe people have, uh, um, an objection to the first four-way, um, if you didn't want to split them, but, um, I support them both. If for some reason it pops up as expressed that maybe there's something we didn't think about, that, um, because that's a lot wider intersection.
So the motion says that we'll approve it unless there's something we're not thinking about? Come on, you gotta give me a motion here that I can work with.
No, it's, it's going back to staff.
So your motion is to send it back to staff for review of those incidentals without slowing it down in terms of making a perpetual motion?
Yeah.
Uh, and, and what's your next step after that? So we send it back to staff, we get that back from them, then we decide at November 25th?
Yeah, I would assume that it, even if we pass it tonight, nothing's going to be done.
Well, you're not going to pass it tonight, you're sending it back to staff.
I know, that's whatever.
Sounds like a marriage over here.
Counselor Thompson?
Why don't we split it? Split the motion into two, as our acting CAO said. Let's deal with Market and Second and get that going.
Okay, so...
And then...
Do we still want cost?
Hold on a second.
I don't, well, we, we know it's somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars, okay? So that, that's issue number one.
Okay.
Issue number two, which I support, is the Second and Seventy Second four-way stop, and I would like to see David go back and maybe do a little bit of study on that.
Yeah, but no engineers or?
No, we don't need an engineer.
Okay, so I'm hearing you saying you want to split this into two motions? The first being to put it in for sure at Second and Market, so is that?
Do we need that? I, I would agree to the...
Second motion, Counselor Thompson?
Change, but do we still need or want, like I said, are we comfortable with the five to ten? I am, I'll, I'll go pen and post, whatever.
Okay, well, I'm still trying to shape this, but it looks like a split at this point would make it a direction to put that four-way in at Market.
Yes.
Okay, and Counselor Thompson is the second or on Counselor Crog's motion?
That's right.
Would you split that motion? She's second.
I would like to hear from Counselor Zelinski, he had his hand up before.
So confusing. Counselor Zelinski?
Uh, just two comments. Uh, one, um, I'd like to know the communication strategy. Even if we said yes on the 12th, I want to make sure that there's an ad in the paper and it doesn't happen until January after the Christmas rush, that, you know, we give everybody as much notice. And, and second of all, I'd like to suggest an amendment to yours that the costs come from the electrical department, so, um...
Are we going to make a light up?
Well, sure, this was on a flashing lights on the stop signs.
That's the only place that has money, so that's...
So...
We have a clear, uh, plan.
Counselor Crog, your judgment? Do we, do we try to shape a motion here on the split, which is...
Our manager of operations, which I...
Please, Dave.
It's in a long queue.
So I heard we, we need a communication strategy. We want a plan of executions of when this is going to take place. It's coming out of operations?
I don't think that's our call at this point.
Okay.
To say where the money comes from.
It's a change in the budget, so we have to...
Yeah, yeah, but we'll deal with that.
Yeah, so it's five or ten thousand dollars.
Let's listen and get this...
It's five or ten thousand dollars, and it's coming out of operations. I kind of want a little bit of direction, so the electrical department would be the choice, I guess.
I think that's a change in budget that should be made at the table here.
Okay.
Just put a label on something up there.
Please, Counselor, you're getting way out of control.
We're not, we're not going to have, uh, painting, I guess, so if this is something that comes up or there's some sort of financial restriction, do, does council or is council okay if it happens first thing in the spring?
I can't see it happening before spring.
Okay, so it's something we can budget for next year, we can put it in and get the paint down and not have to worry about the temporary stop signs or the new stop signs that are going to have to be put up temporarily in place of the new stop signs?
Yeah.
Okay. I can work with that.
So is the motion that we go ahead with Market and Second as soon as possible?
Sure.
Can I suggest that Kevin read out the motion first?
We're splitting this now.
Does he know what we're talking about?
Well, someone mentioned it.
So we had, note past tense, but we had the council direct staff to install a four-way stop at Market and Second to be funded from operations. Then the timeline got added, and how do you, do you want to set a specific target date? If we say, uh, as soon as possible, does that imply this fiscal year or next fiscal year? So a little clarity there would be useful.
And are we aware of the financial implications of this to the department?
Which is spring.
Is it better to give you some way to work with that?
Your Worship, what I was going to suggest is put a top on it. If council's saying they're comfortable with ten thousand dollars, that the numbers won't see, say ten thousand, then we'll bring it back and say, "Oh, costs go up, now they're fifty," and they shall know. And that way, if you're, if you're voting on it, they can, it's five to ten, we'll put it up or limit it. It's not until spring anyway, so plenty of time to get back.
Yeah, but the thing is that, that it can be in the 2020 budget.
Right.
Capital budget, so it's no limits this year if it's not going to be done till spring. And that gives you an opportunity to get your costs in together.
So we do need to meet net up? Sorry, it says ASAP.
It's your motion, Counselor.
I know, that's why I say, hey, we've got to change that because we could do it tomorrow, it would suck, but...
Kevin?
Uh, so for your consideration, um, the council direct staff to install a four-way stop at Market and Second to be funded from operations to a maximum of ten thousand dollars and to be installed by spring 2020.
By the end of spring 2020.
Yeah, put, put them up in here.
Because that buys you till the end of June in case...
No, 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 no.
Are we going calendar spring or weather spring?
It matters with road painting or paving and, and painting and all that, so that Dave has the right amount of time to line this up. So our, our line painters normally come prior to May long weekend, so...
Okay, before the end of May.
Yep.
You should all have to go through sitting in this chair.
Heck, it was easy when I was there.
Yeah, it was. Function smoothly, it was one of our shortest meetings.
Okay, are you ready for this first motion? As Kevin has described it?
Yeah, don't look back.
Ready for the question?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor? Opposed? There was no opposed. And a second motion to consider a four-way stop at Seventy Third, Seventy Second?
Seventy Second.
Seventy Second and Second, and not, um, it was said earlier...
Consider the implications of...
Uh, the implications, uh, and that would have cost, or is it just going to be the same?
Well, we'd get a report back in terms of cost and the implications of putting in that.
Oh, thank you.
That's the second motion, and Kevin, have you captured that? Uh, one moment, please.
Would council like that at a certain time, like, for example, by the time the budget season starts?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because we would like a, if it's a go, we want the same date. It would save time of...
Season budget season yesterday?
Yep.
So any time now.
Counting minutes. Okay, that second motion is crafted. Further comment on that? Question? All those in favor? Carrie? Okay.
These tough subjects are hard to get through.
Hey, hey, who's got nine oh two? Nine oh two, one oh.
We are down to Public and Media. Do we have any comments or, um, items from the gallery?
Not by conduct.
Well, I'll start off with, Y24 is a gun expensive, five, ten thousand bucks, I mean, really.
For two by four.
It's four by four.
Okay, so I have to follow the puck at the hockey games, and that's easy compared to trying to track what you guys say. Teachable moments.
Yeah.
One, counselors should all use their microphones.
Okay.
Two, the fact that a group of adults, teachers no less, could all get the wrong message from watching the same council recording should say something about council's ability to communicate effectively or not. And third, oh, I had a secondary? Cool, I rest my case.
Yeah.
And fourth, just because you heard it, it doesn't mean that those who heard it also heard what you heard, hear me? That's it, I'm done.
Thank you.
Is that off Facebook or is that off you?
That's just off here, it's me.
Which is actually Dr. Joyce.
Mr. Jensen.
Robert. Gee.
Oh, God!
I only bought this two weeks ago. There was some discussion when talking about shelters, about, like, council accepted some responsibility, but BC Housing made clear to the advisory group last week that no money gets moved without council's support.
week, that no money gets moved without council's support, so council is the decision-maker in some way, shape, or form.
Thank you.
Am I correct in understanding that?
You are, that is one of the three conditions that Council Mosland brought to the table from his discussions.
All of my, um, discussion is aimed at the process, and, and how I felt it was wrong and backwards, right? So, that's, I don't, yeah.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Further questions? Hearing that, a motion to adjourn.